I want to thank you all for coming, but we also want to thank the Hespera Legion. Thank you very much for letting us use this hall for this meeting. And one request for people who are taking pictures and videos, there are a lot of honoured veterans of pictures on the walls in this room. We don't want to photograph those. We're here to listen to some candidates, so just keep focused on the candidates if you can. We want to thank the community associations in Cambridge for their support, and the Cambridge Community Association particularly, for letting us use their town hall that we had on Monday night. So this is our second town hall. We want to thank Dave Attenborough and Drew Wilson over there running the audio. And they're from Galt Jazz, you may know Galt Jazz, they have shows on the street downtown Galt last Sunday of every month. And so thank you to Dave and Drew. Also thank you to the Waterloo Region Community Foundation for co-sponsoring this event. Note that this meeting is being recorded. We have Miles here and Mark over here. These are guys that are recording this for Citizens for Cambridge. And the resulting video will be on our website within the next day or two. Is that right, Miles? A day or two? One day? Okay. And so, and if you go to our website at www.citizensforcambridge.org to have access to all the videos from the Rogers TV debates and the two town halls that we've had one and now we're doing this one this evening. These same candidates already participated in a debate without an audience at Rogers TV, and it's available on our website as well. If you're not on our web, we'll email you and tell you when the recording's available. If you're not on our email list, you can add it to the email list over there, and we'll make sure to send you a notification when there's been an update on our website. I'm going to need to talk to you. You know, it's not that easy to get this many people together in the same room to talk to. So this is for them, but it's also for you, so you have an opportunity to hear from these five candidates in one place, one evening, with a variety of questions to help you inform your decision making on election day. Hopefully, we all sincerely can appreciate these candidates. They're making a huge commitment that most of us would not want to make. It's a lot of work what they're going through. It's quite a commitment. Next is Lauren Bruce, MP. And next is Ethan Russell, Conservative. And Randall Williams, People's Party. And I'll turn over to you.
Well, good evening, and thank you, everybody, for joining us. And thank you to the candidates who have joined us today. It's very much appreciated. We recognize that individual members of parliament do not set company, do not set party policy. However, tonight, we want to hear what the individual candidates personally intend to advocate for within their party and in parliament for here, for us here in Hespera. Events like tonight's town hall are increasingly important for the state of today's democracy. We live in a world of political soundbites, misinformation, and echo chambers that are powered by social media. Today is an opportunity for the community to have an opportunity to gather together, interact directly with our potential representatives. For the debate format, we're going to provide each candidate to have a minute for an opening statement. They will have one minute to respond to each and every question from the pre-prepared questions, and then one minute for a closing statement. And we have been asked by the Legion to begin vacating the premises by 9:00 PM, so that everybody can go home and hopefully watch their taped or streamed versions of tonight's leaders debate. So we'd like to start out with the opening statements. Let's begin with opening remarks from the candidates. Each candidate will have one minute. And first up is Valerie Bradford from the Liberal Party. Welcome.
Good evening. I'd like to thank the citizens of Cambridge, Waterloo Region Community Foundation, Cambridge Neighborhood Organizations, and the Legion for hosting this community town hall, and all those who have made time to join us this evening. I am Valerie Bradford, and for the past three and a half years, I've had the honour of serving as your Member of Parliament for Kitchener South Hespera, a responsibility I do not take lightly or for granted. Prior to running for office, I worked as a Business Development Officer for the city of Kitchener for 15 years, where I focused on providing assistance to the business community, particularly the manufacturing sector. Economic development was an excellent preparation for being an MP, as it gave me a good understanding of the issues and challenges and opportunities. I hope to have the opportunity to continue my public service as MP, as we face new threats to our sovereignty and challenges to our economy imposed by our no longer friendly neighbourhood of the South.
Excellent. Thank you, Valerie. Next is Lauren Bruce with the New Democratic Party. Welcome, Lauren.
That's all right, Corey. Spit that one out. I'd like to thank the sponsors for holding this event, because this is democracy at work. I'm here to apply for the job to become a member of parliament. And I'd like everybody here to think themselves as the human resources department, or the boss, because it's your decision to make who you're going to hire to represent you and be your voice in the world's, or the nation's capital. So if we treat this, I treat this like an interview. And, you know, I know there's somewhat 80,000 people that have a say in it. But ultimately, when you are, when you take on that position, that's who you answer to, right? So we can talk about the politics of politics, or the party platform, all that sort of stuff. But ultimately, I'm here to answer to you. So I'm very much looking forward to the questions. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Next up is Ethan Russell with the Green Party.
Hi, yeah. Thanks for setting all this up. And a big thanks to the Hespera Legion for hosting us tonight. I know it's a, it's a big deal to gather all these people together, all these candidates. We actually have the Conservative candidate. I know how rare that is. So it is great to see everybody out here. Yeah, I mean, if it isn't already clear, I'm by far the youngest person on this stage. I'm only 21 years old. I'm currently a student at Conestoga College. I'm studying the Bachelor of Early Learning Programme Development. While I may be quite young, I do believe that I have what it takes to represent this community. I've lived here all my life. I love this community. I want to do right by it. And while, yes, as our lovely moderator did mention, candidates do not set the policy of the party. When you vote for a Green candidate, you do get somebody who is independent and represents your voice. I will not be whipped to vote for however Elizabeth May wants. I can speak directly to the voice of Kitchener South Hespera and fight for the policy that the people of this community want. Thank you so much, and I hope we have a great night.
Excellent. Thank you for calling me lovely, Ethan. I really appreciate that.
I mean it.
Okay. Next up is Matt Stroess from the Conservative Party. Welcome, Matt.
Hi, everyone. Thank you so much for being here. It's a great pleasure to be able to introduce myself to you all today. Before I do, I just want to take one moment to say it's so great to have this wall of heroes staring at us. And I'm so thankful to the Legion and for these men and women who died, so we could have the democratic rights and freedoms that we're enjoying tonight. It means a lot to be here, and thank you all for being here. I grew up here in Hespera. I'm raising my family here now. Thank you to them as well for putting up with me in doing this. I've been a physician, serving the community for the last 13 years. I've been a professor at the Waterloo Regional Medical School. I've been a public health officer. I suppose the best place in the world to raise a family. That's why I've chosen to raise my family here. But we have to be honest about the fact that it's getting very hard for families. It's getting very hard for everyone. Housing prices have gone up. Costs have skyrocketed. Crime is out of control, and even the safest neighbourhoods now. So we need serious changes. And I'm excited to talk to you today about our Conservative plan for serious changes regarding these matters. Thanks.
Excellent. Well done. Next up is Randall Williams from the People's Party. Welcome, Randall.
Good evening, everyone. I would like to thank the citizens of Cambridge, all the Cambridge associations, and especially this building and all the wonderful people in it. Today is a very special day, and quite fitting that the Royal Canadian Legion is the place where we're having this. Today is the anniversary of our Charter of Rights and Freedoms. Over the past several years, those freedoms have been suppressed, if not wiped out. We've seen criminalization of our association. We've seen censorship on our freedom of speech. We've seen, excuse me, we've seen the press being criminalized. Freedom of association is being criminalized, as I said. Freedom of religion is on attack. So we have to stand together as the people and defend our fundamental God-given rights, so that we all can live together in harmony. Otherwise, we're going down a very dark road, and I don't want to see that to happen. Thank you so much.
Excellent. Thank you, Randall. So now what we'd like to do is, we'd like to go to the residents' pre-prepared questions section of tonight's program. Some of the emails, questions that we received were addressed earlier during the Rogers TV debate. Tonight, we're going to focus on questions submitted by residents via email that went beyond those topics that have already been debated by, by the candidates here. Just so you know, the topics that were covered in the Rogers debate included tariffs and trade, housing affordability, homelessness and encampments, supportive housing for mental health and addiction, seniors housing, news media, and CBC. Now, you can check out these debates for the candidate answers on these topics at the website that was mentioned earlier, at citizensforcambridge.org. Now, the first email question is going to go first to Lauren Bruce. This question is regard to transportation and future growth in Cambridge. As Cambridge continues to grow, so did the demands on our transportation infrastructure. Residents have long advocated for improved public transit options, including the extension of the ION LRT to Cambridge and better GO train service to Toronto. What is your position on these major transit projects? And how would you work to ensure Cambridge receives the federal support it needs to be, to build a connected, future-ready transportation system? More.
Thank you, Corey. So over the past few decades, in the various roles that I've held as the elected President of Waterloo Regional Labour Council, we've worked with many community organizations from right across the region. And one of the things that afforded me the opportunity to talk to the municipal level government, so when I had conversations with the mayor from Kitchener, Waterloo, or Cambridge, we all, we talked about priorities and budgetary restraints, and what they needed from other different levels of government cooperation. So of course, we talked about transportation. It's years, you know, we've all talked about Highway 7 and that debacle for years, trying to get that done. I understand it's a provincial responsibility, but in partnership with the feds, it's an important development. So again, when the ION was first being built, I was having conversations with city council members in all three of the big cities here in the region, and asking them, what were they looking for and how quickly they could get. So absolutely a support, extending it into Cambridge. It absolutely makes sense. I also understand the budgetary restrictions when it comes to municipalities, because they only have so much money per year. And so they have to do it in a segmented way, right? So absolutely, it's part of the bigger issue when it comes to transportation. We're talking about environmental concerns and whatnot. So we have to expand our public transit here in the region. And also, when we talk about transportation, if I look at it in an economic reason, or light, I should say, here in KW, in our, in our region Waterloo, we are uniquely submitted, and I'm running out of time, and I'd love to have blather on, but anyway.
Thank you. Thank you. Ethan, you're next.
Yeah, I mean, I am a very proud user of the ION in Kitchener. I use it to get a lot of where I need to go. And honestly, one thing that is a disappointment is that I can't also get to Cambridge on it. So I do fully support extending the ION and improving public transit in general, not just the ION, also buses into Cambridge. Now, as Lauren said, that is a very municipal level issue. I think the federal government can do more to fund these public transit projects into the municipalities. But I also think a big thing that the federal government is doing that we need to talk about is this high-speed rail network that the government is opening between Toronto and Quebec City. Why does it start in Toronto? You know, we are one of the fastest growing regions in the country. We are a, we are a region of 600,000 total people. We have a bustling economy, and that is something that we should be growing. But we can't grow that as well if the train stops in Toronto. The train that the Liberals are building is great, it's fantastic, it has been a dream of mine for years. Let's extend it all the way down to Windsor, and let's turn Kitchener into a public transit hub for the country.
Excellent. Fantastic. Okay. And Matt, over to you, please.
So this is becoming something of a habit. I agree again with my young Green colleague. My wife is here, she's Dutch. If you explain to someone from the Netherlands that we live 100 kilometres from downtown Toronto, but there's four trains a day and they take two hours, they would say you're crazy. This country was built by a railway, it was built by Sir John McDonald, Sir Johnny McDonald, building the railway all the way out to the West Coast. And I don't understand why we can't get it done now, in this year 2025. The Liberals had promised it for 10 years, and get it done right before the election. They said, oh, we'll get it, we'll get a plan done over the next four years. And then that plan, appallingly, does not include our region. We have four Liberal MPs in this region. I haven't seen any advocacy from them on this topic. I will hoot and holler, I will write it for the paper, I will climb over desks. We ought to build this railway, and if we build it, over my dead body, over my hometown of the Colton.
Okay, thank you. Randall.
Well, this is right up my wheelhouse. I've been a trucker for almost 40 years, and I've driven all through this North America. And one thing that's always been a thorn in my back is that we don't have a multi-interstate highway going from one coast to the other. Having transportation within the city, that's fine. But most traffic is being done by truck and by train. This is what needs to be done. Transportation, moving people around, is good. I don't have a problem with that. But that's a provincial, municipal issue. Can we help with that? Yes, we can. But we need to improve our road system. That's a must. I've been hearing for 40 bloody years that we're going to have a multi-lane highway between Kitchener and Guelph. Still waiting, still on the plan, and not happening. So I want to build this country up, not just the region. Thank you.
Excellent. Valerie, over to you, please.
Thank you, Corey. So this is an issue near and dear to my heart. So the LRT that was built in KW, we were unique. We were keen, and we went ahead, and it was one-third, one-third, one-third funding. The municipality, you folks, paid a third of it. Everybody that came afterwards, it was 50-50 between the feds and the provincial. So I'm adamant that stage two, which we're working on, down to Cambridge, what you really need should be 50-50 like everybody else got. And you know, the LRT has been so successful up in KW. We only had it for a year prior to COVID. Not a long time to establish ridership. But when we came back out of COVID, right off the bat, the ridership really recovered. It's been very, very heavily used. I'm always quite amazed when I go to downtown Kitchener and I see how many people are on it. And Cambridge deserves that level of service as well. Now, getting back to the transit to Toronto, obviously, Cambridge as well needs GO service or train tram. Oh, oh my goodness. Two hours of train ride is not going to get people out of their cars. That's a bad day in the 401. I wish I could say more. Google actually brings buses for the Googlers out of Toronto.
Thank you, Valerie. All right. So that's, this brings us to our second question, which is in respect to addiction and treatment. Second question, some are promoting the incarceration of Canadian fentanyl consumers. This policy would likely jail nearly every consumer at a cost of about $2 million, $2 million per person, per 15-year sentence, totaling billions of tax dollars to incarcerate consumers across Waterloo region alone. If elected, will you support this incarceration policy? And if so, how will you fund it? If not, what immediate federal relief to prevent and/or reduce drug poisoning deaths can local constituents expect you to advocate for? Ethan, we'll start with you, please.
Yeah, thank you so much. So this is a question that I don't know if I can answer in a minute, especially because that clocks us 20 seconds. But one of the big issues that I will absolutely stand against is the incarceration of drug users. These are people with a health problem. These are not criminals. These are people who are wrapped into a problem. I have seen members of my family struggle with just cigarette addictions, and how difficult it can be for them to kick that. Now we're talking something that is magnitudes more addictive. Locking them up is a bad economic decision, because the money we pour into the prisons goes nowhere, and it's a bad social decision. It keeps the people addicted. Now, we, as a government, I believe, need to put more funding into proper addiction services. A lot of the measures that we're doing are good starts, but they're half-measures that we only just dropped. The safe consumption sites are good. They have reduced overdoses. But we don't do them properly. And so what that does is it causes a problem where you have this service that then people work around, but there's not the actual funding or infrastructure to get them out of it. That's what we need to focus on.
Excellent. Matt, over to you, please.
The matter of addictions is near and dear to my heart. As a physician, I treat addictions. I have lost loved ones. I've lost patients to this problem. It is a crisis. It has killed tens of thousands of Canadians over the last 10 years. I must say, I'm not aware of any major political party that's interested in jailing drug users. I certainly am not. I favor the Portuguese model, and I've always advocated for it in my work in public health. We are interested in jailing fentanyl dealers. And as somebody who has had to tell parents that their 19-year-old has died because somebody sold them bad fentanyl, I can tell you, they are for a policy like that, and so am I. Fentanyl dealers are often selling 1,000 lethal doses of fentanyl to users. It is, it is just, it is very similar to selling 200 loaded handguns to a 17-year-old. Oh, that says four seconds. Oh, I didn't realize. Okay. But if I can just use that last five seconds to say, when my patients have died of fentanyl and they're found dead downtown, it has struck me as odd that the police don't investigate to find the dealer who sold them that deadly weapon that ended their life. So I'm for jailing fentanyl dealers.
Excellent. Thank you, Matt. Randall.
I agree with everybody here that there is a serious problem. And the safe consumption sites are doing good. I'm not going to take that away from them. But what they're not doing is giving them an ability to get off the drug, okay? They're only saving them from dying right there. In fact, increase in deaths, opioid deaths have increased, not gone down, okay? Since 2021, the University of Waterloo did a report on this, and they said opioid deaths since 2021 have shot up 592%. That's not right. Okay? We're spending a lot of money, but we're not doing it right. We need to take that money and make sure we have rehab. People need help, not more drugs. Thank you.
Okay, Valerie, over to you.
Thanks. I agree with the rest of the panelists. These poor unfortunate people are addicts. They have a health problem. They didn't intend to get addicted to fentanyl, and it happened by accident, and they need our help. We certainly don't need to incarcerate them. Are prisons anyway, are we? Over capacity. And like Matt says, that's where the pushers, the users and the producers should be, not, I'm sorry, not the users, the people that are, you know, selling these things. So I do believe in the harm reduction sites, because they do save lives. The ideal is if they can encourage people to get treatment, to get off of it. But like all addictions, the person has to be ready. You can't force them into these programs until they're ready. And they have to sometimes get really down and low before they really realize that. And sometimes it takes several courses of treatment. Anyone that's dealt with alcoholism knows that. So yes, I definitely would not be incarcerating these poor people that have a health problem.
Thank you, Valerie. Lauren?
Obviously, it's a scourge in our society and south of the border. Now, we talked about criminality, and we talked about a healthcare issue. Through my work with the Ontario Health Coalition, and by extension, the Canadian Health Coalition, one of the main priorities of those organizations is to make sure that our healthcare is not privatized. And so what I've been having discussions with people is the actual Canada Healthcare Act, and what it actually ensures and what it covers. So I've been advocating for the fact that maybe we should be doing a deep dive and modernizing that act, so that we can cover off a lot more of the issues when it comes to mental health, addictions, and not just primary care, or long-term care. So what I'm saying is, the Canada Healthcare Act is supposed to ensure that every province provides care, no matter where you live in Canada, right? And I stand before you as if you just went through the healthcare system, and I'm out of time. One minute, it's a huge issue. Sorry.
Thank you, Lauren. You've actually provided us with a very good segue into our third topic and third question for the evening, which is healthcare. This question states, "Mental health has long been underrepresented in Canada's universal healthcare system. Do you believe mental health care should be fully integrated into our public healthcare system?" Also, "Our healthcare system is plagued with a list of issues such as long emergency wait times and inability to find a family doctor. What steps would you take to attempt to make progress on health system issues?" As luck would have it, Dr. Matt, we turn this over to you first.
Thank you, Corey. I'll say I'm a bit confused by the first part, because mental health is part of our healthcare system right now. Mental health is part of my practice on a daily basis. When I came back from school to the region to be an ICU doctor, I did not anticipate that 10 to 15% of my practice would be addictions overdose and mental health. But it is, that's the reality of what I do as a hospital doctor every day. Should there be better mental health support in our healthcare system? Yes, of course, absolutely. In terms of people receiving timely and appropriate care, this issue is something I've been banging my head against for the last 13 years. I'm sorry to say that there are extraordinary inefficiencies in our system as it exists right now. I have terrible stories to tell you about. Those of you who receive the Hespera magazine will know I experienced such a thing in my family recently. There's a lack of transparency and accountability in our public healthcare, and I think we need to build that in. I like the principles of the Canada Health Act. I think transparency and accountability would be a good addition, and I have another hour to talk about this, if you're still inclined afterwards.
Excellent. Thank you. Randall, over to you, please.
I would just like to say that the federal government has a very limited role here, okay? Because it's a provincial issue, and I know a lot of premieres will be really upset if we tread on their territory, so to speak. Mental health is a health problem and something we should all worry about, instead of like the Liberal government wants to do, just sign up for MAID, then we just end your problem. I don't agree with that. These people need help. And the PPC party wants to be that help. But they got to get the provinces on board, and right now that is a very huge struggle, I'm sorry to say. So things need to change. More money is not going to fix this problem. Over the last 10 years, we lost over 400, excuse me, 400 hospitals, and we increased the population by over 3 million. So do the math. Something's not working here, and we need to correct this. Thank you.
Thank you, Randall. We have two rebuttals. First, we'd like to have Valerie, and then following that, Matt.
I have to take exception. The federal government is not using MAID to be involved in this at all. MAID is a very serious personal decision. Canada has taken steps to approve MAID for people with terminal illness and very deep pain and incurable illness. It's under review for anyone that has mental illness, because that's a whole different, separate slope. So we, you know, that is under further review. But it's not that the federal government would ever encourage anyone under any circumstances to use MAID. It's a personal decision up to the, up to the individual involved.
Thank you. And Matt, 30 seconds.
Oh, I just wanted to make a remark, because it's come up very often at the doors when I talk about I'm a physician, and I know some ways that we could help our healthcare. And people say, well, it's a provincial responsibility. I've read our constitution front to back several times. Hospitals in our constitution are a federal responsibility, but health more broadly is indeed a federal responsibility. One thing many people don't know, the board that I wrote my exam with, to become a specialist physician, the Royal College of Physicians and Surgeons of Canada, was created by the federal parliament in 1924. And they are the body that's holding up some of the accreditation of foreign physicians, so that's squarely under federal jurisdiction. Obviously, the Canada Health Act is a federal document. And then, of course, the public health And then, of course, the Public Health Agency of Canada looks after public health for the nation and is a federal body.
Thank you. And Randall, you may have 30 seconds for a rebuttal as well.
My rebuttal to the rebuttal is, yes, that's exactly the way it's supposed to happen, but it's not. There's been report over report over report, okay? Either the media is lying to us, who knows? But there's been awful, a lot of reports of people who have mental, like depression, mental institutions that are not around anymore because they've been defunded. So depression is the number one thing, especially when times get tough. We need to give help to these people, not end their lives. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you for your rebuttals. And moving on, I believe Valerie, it's your turn. Yeah?
Yes, thank you. This is a very important issue. And yes, the federal government does have a role in healthcare in that we send a lot of money down to the provinces. Yes, it is a provincial responsibility. There'll be a lot of money, money death flow from the federal government. However, the provinces always want to tell us, send us the money, but don't tell us how to spend it. I think we look at what's going on in Ontario with our healthcare system, and it's clear they don't know how to spend it, because, you know, things are not in great shape in our healthcare system. But mental health, we did last time, we negotiated an agreement with all the provinces, and that was within the last couple of years, insist that a certain amount be dedicated to mental health. People's mental health was severely compromised during COVID. We told people to stay home and not talk to people for two years, and then we wonder why they come out and they're not okay. It's been particularly difficult for our young people, very, very hard on them. And the schools still notice that they're not coping well. People are social animals, and you can't isolate them. So we're still all in recovery from that. But I agree that mental health is a very important component, and we need to have more resources for it.
Matt, 30 second rebuttal?
Yeah, may I use my rebuttal to say I completely agree with everything Valerie said about the mental health consequences of the pandemic. I was writing a lot, advocating a lot about this problem back in 2020. In the summer of 2020, we already knew that the rate of overdose death in young men in Ontario had quadrupled over that first lockdown in the spring of 2020. So really significant mistakes were made, and it was my honor to advocate against such mistakes in future.
Thank you. Randall, 30 second rebuttal?
Yes. At least they're admitting that shutting down our economy wasn't a good thing. They just admitted it. I'm surprised, actually. I've never experienced this in my life. I've never even read about it in my life where they're going to shut down everybody's job because of a virus. That's the wrong way to do it. They just admitted health went down the train, down the drain. A lot of elderly needed surgeries, couldn't get them done. So now you're on the back burner. There's 30-week wait just to see a specialist from first appointment to last. So can we never do this again, please?
Thank you, Randall. Ethan, we'll give you...
Just a quick rebuttal. When you said all businesses were shut down? I work in a grocery store. Can you imagine the entire population of your community coming through the doors? Think about that for a second. We are not people that can work from home, okay? We're proud to serve our community and make sure people could have access to food. Didn't know it was going to be a bathroom tissue room, but hey. So, you know, we were frontline workers providing an essential service. We're not considered essential workers, but we're frontline workers, right? So when you said everybody shuts down, and, you know, I had some issues with our federal government that calls into the Emergency Act and doesn't have anything prepared for those businesses to be open. Because we all know if it's a hurricane or whatever, grocery stores are going to be open, and those folks need to be protected, and there need to be protocol in place for those workers.
Randall, we'll go with Valerie, and then your 30-second rebuttal to all three comments, okay? All right, Valerie?
Yes, and thank you, Lauren, for your work and all the people that did put their lives on the line. I think we all need to remember, we did not know what we were dealing with. We did not know how it was spread. It wasn't airborne. I mean, we fenced off playground equipment so kids could catch it on the slide. We had no idea, and we had no vaccines. It was an extremely frightening time. So the only way we knew how to cope with it is wear masks, keep people separated, because we didn't know how it was spreading, but we knew it was deadly. So I think it behooves us to remember that in hindsight.
Okay. And Randall, to you, please.
I don't believe I said every business was shut down. I said the economy was shut down. I'm a trucker. I was also one of those frontline workers. I worked right through it, okay? Every single day, six days a week, making sure people had their issues, their doubts, okay? What I'm talking about is the vast majority of people here. They were not working.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have anybody else that needs to answer the healthcare question? I've lost track.
I think me and Lauren have not done it yet.
Okay? Perfect. So, yeah? All right. So Lauren, go ahead.
So this is the long-form answer or the rebuttal?
This is the one-minute stat. If you call it one-minute long...
So if I continue on in my conversation about healthcare? So obviously, it's been an issue that I care deeply about. I mentioned that I'm part of the Ontario Health Coalition and the Canadian Health Coalition. But let me speak to this issue from a life lived. So tragically, I was involved in a car accident about a year ago. I'm still in recovery. And thank God I live in Canada, right? Something unexpected happened, popped up, and I was in serious situation. Not to say that there weren't issues, okay? So, and I won't get into the technical, medical, all that sort of stuff. But when I initially admitted my daughter was losing her mind because I was in the hallway, and I couldn't get any medication or any treatment until I was admitted. Now, I don't have a whole recollection of how long it took. My daughter said it was over six, seven hours before I was admitted. But thank you to the angels that work in the medical system. And of course, my analytic brain can't help it. As I'm going through all the treatments and whatnot, I can't help analyze how this works, how the system works, and the shift work and the stress that the staff is under. But anyways, they were angels, and thank God I live in Canada.
Thank you, Lauren. Ethan, over to you, please.
Yeah, I think mental health is something that's been so important to me over my life. My best friend is somebody who has a large struggles with mental health. She was recently in the hospital over a possible suicide attempt. She's been in and out of the hospital as a person just my age over, you know, depression, suicide, so many other issues. And I've routinely seen her just not get the help. You know, the wait times for a therapist are insane. And if you finally do get a therapist, and you don't like them, they don't work with you, they don't work for you, you kind of can't get rid of them, because the wait lines to get another one are so unbelievably long. You know, we mentioned the idea that 400 hospitals have been closed, but funding isn't the problem. Now, I don't know, but, you know, I have seen the repeated lack of funds towards mental healthcare, and I've seen it impact my friends. I've seen it impact me. I don't have a family doctor. You know, when I have to go and get the checkup done, I have to go to the urgent care and hope that the lines won't be so long. I feel like this is something that we need to say, like as a federal government, let's invest money into mental healthcare like we do with hospitals, like we do with healthcare and dental care.
Thank you, Ethan. Lauren, do you have a rebuttal?
Not exactly a rebuttal, but I just like to further the conversation about healthcare here in Canada. So like I said, I believe I belong to those coalitions who we've been fighting against privatization. And we see governments, conservative governments running across this country trying to privatize our healthcare. And you can bank on the fact the Americans want to get a hold of our healthcare system, right? They see dollar signs, and they cannot be on the table for any future negotiations if we come up with a deal with our American friends.
Thank you, Lauren. Thank you, everybody. It's 7:45 at this point in the evening. Like, what we would like to do is transition the program from the predetermined audience questions that came via email to questions live from the audience. What we want to do to facilitate this portion is that we ask that the members of the audience with questions, please raise your hands. We will identify the audience member, and one of our team members will provide them with a microphone. Audience members will be given a maximum of 60 seconds to ask their question of the candidates, and we will follow the same pattern in order of one-minute answers, including the opportunity for our 30-second rebuttals. We strive to get through as many audiences' questions as possible, so please keep it brief. We will cease this part of the program at 8:30, and then we will conclude the open Q and A to give a one-minute closing statement. So I believe this woman here at the front was very early with her hand up.
Hello. Yeah, okay. My question is for all candidates, but primarily for Valerie Bradford. So I heard you speaking at Pro-Ukrainian Rally on February 24th, 2025, and the year before that. However, when I sent you two emails about sending weapons to Ukraine, I haven't, like, I didn't receive a reply from you. So my question is, what's your stance on providing lethal weapon to Ukraine? Thank you. And if anyone wants to comment on that, please comment.
First of all, I'm sorry if, like, apparently you didn't get an answer from my office, and I'm very sorry for that. There's too many emails. There's emails that I see, that's one account, and there's the emails that come. We get a couple hundred emails a day. So there's no way an MP can see that. So there's staff that triage them. So I don't know when you sent them, and whether it was when we were transitioning staff. In any case, Canada has supported the Ukrainian side in the war right from the get-go. It was an illegal invasion by Russia into Ukraine. So we support Ukraine. So because of that, we are on that side, and we do provide weapons to Ukraine to defend themselves. Otherwise, they'd just be overrun, and then the Russians were just coming in and taking over. So we do support them, and we do send weapons that are actually made in Kitchener to Ukraine. And we help train the Ukrainian forces over there as well. We have many, many Ukrainian-origin Canadians, and it's a real concern. It's a concern for all of Europe, because if Russia gets Ukraine, they won't stop there.
Thank you. Lauren, over to you.
Yeah, I think Canadians, in a large part, do support Ukraine in their battle, and I think we do support democracy. And I think if we overlook the geopolitical situation, I think Canada has an opportunity to have a lead role when it comes to international crisis and cooperation. So there is limits to what the Canadian military can do. But I think all the parties are in support of what Canada's been able to do thus far and continue with that pledge of support.
Thank you. Ethan?
Yeah, I mean, one of the very first things I did when I was signing forth as a candidate is I went over and I bought this Canada-Ukrainian friendship pin. I am a big supporter of Ukraine. I will say, when war first started, I was against the export of, like, super-lethal weapons, like cluster bombs. However, while I still do take a moral issue with some of those things, I think as we see other nations, like the United States and parts of Europe, drop Ukraine, I think we need to step up. If we want to be the leaders of the free world, then we can be. And that starts with arming and funding Ukraine. We're not going to get peace by letting the Russians walk away with whatever they want. We should not stop until every inch of Ukrainian land from before 2014, that includes Crimea, is back in Ukrainian hands.
Excellent. Thank you. Matt, over to you, please.
Thank you for the question. Obviously, Vladimir Putin is an authoritarian, evil dictator. The invasion was unjustified based on absolute lies, and it's been brutal and heart-wrenching to see the outcomes thereof. I support Canada providing all sorts of aid to Ukraine. I also want to see the conflict brought to a resolution through peaceful means. So, and I believe in peace through strength. So if the way to get to peace is through arms, terrific. If the way to get to peace is through diplomacy, terrific. I'm not, I'm not, what do I say? International security expert. I just want to get to peace and support our principle.
Thank you. Randall?
Well, I have to agree with Matt. I think life is precious, and we should save it at all costs. Canada used to be a peacemaking country. We were the peacekeepers around here. That's what we were known for. But now, the Liberals want to escalate a war, not push for peace, which is kind of strange, don't you think? We need peace. We need to start saving lives. That doesn't come through more military weapons to kill more people, because this will just escalate. We need a peaceful resolution. And the government of Canada should get back to the roots and find a way for a peaceful resolution. Thank you.
I believe Valerie would like a 30-second rebuttal?
Yes. Canada has historically been peacekeepers.
The thing of it is, you need peace to be able to keep it. You can't keep peace in an active war zone. And, you know, it would be nice if there could be a negotiated settlement. I don't have a lot of confidence with President Trump dealing with Ukraine. It seems he's ready to write it off and give it away. I think we all saw that horrific scene in the Oval Office with President Zelensky. So anyway, we will stand strong with Ukraine as long as it takes.
Ethan, with 30 seconds, and then we'll move on to the next audience question, please.
I have said prior, I'm a student of history, so I want to be a student of history once again. We saw that same language once before, 1938. We saw that exact same words happen when Hitler took Austria, when he took Czechoslovakia, and all the way up until he took Poland. We saw how that ended with the deadliest war in humankind. We should not let Putin genocide Ukrainians, because we want to feel comfortable.
Thank you. On to the next audience member question, please. We'll do this side of the room here, the woman in the checkered shirt, please.
Thank you for this opportunity. The Canadian government has issued permits for the export of weapons, parts, and components, along with military and security technology to Israel, both directly and via the United States. The Canadian military and defense industry also purchases Israeli weapons and parts, many of which are field-tested on Palestinians. This means Canada is directly funding Israel's war efforts and economy, making Canada complicit in Israel's ongoing atrocities. The Minister of Foreign Affairs stated in the fall of 2024 that an arms embargo had been enacted, however, only 30 permits were suspended, leaving over 200 still open. And this is only a one-way arms embargo. Will you work to end Israel's genocidal campaign on Palestinians by supporting a two-way arms embargo on Israel? And will you address Canada's indirect arms exports to Israel via third-party countries such as the United States?
Thank you. Lauren, we would like you to answer the question first, please.
Yes.
Okay. Short and to the point. Excellent.
Ethan.
Absolutely.
And I'll add that Canada should respect the International Criminal Court, for which we are a member.
Thank you. Once again, please, no clapping until closing remarks, please. Thank you. Okay? Ethan, go ahead.
So I had already pointed out my Ukrainian-Canadian friendship pin. At that same time, I also bought a Palestinian-Canadian friendship pin. Sadly, when I was putting my backpack on one day, it came off, and I don't know where it is. But yes, I absolutely support a two-way arms embargo with Israel. I think what they are doing, you know, it has been recognized as a genocide by basically everybody who has looked at it. I think that, you know, while we can, I think that debating whether or not we need a one-state solution, two-state solution, whatever, I think that that debate is simply distracting from the fact that we have people who are dying who shouldn't be. Israel is acting like Russia, and I think that we need to stop that.
Okay?
This is really horrendous situation. It's very difficult to speak about in one minute. I am against bombs being dropped on women and children, period, full stop. I say again, not an international security expert. I speak neither Hebrew nor Arabic. I have difficulty knowing what is true and what is false about what is claimed about the conflict. I just want the conflict to stop. So you spoke about 200 permits and 30 have been suspended, and 170 have not. I'd be very happy to review those documents. I don't understand what the rationale was for the 170 versus the 30. So I can't say, I can't say if I'm for 30 or 50 or all 200 being suspended until I review it, but my overwhelming desire as a physician, as a humanitarian, is for peace in that region, and whatever Canada can do to get there, I am for.
Okay? Thank you. And Randall.
Well, I don't agree with war anywhere, and I don't want to see war anywhere. But that seems to be a part of our history in human life. We're always fighting amongst each other, countries against countries. Don't like it, but it's a reality. People keep talking about the genocide against the Palestinians. Nobody talks about the genocide the Palestinians did against the Jews. 1,200-plus people were just slaughtered in less than one day. We just ignore that, right? Move on, move on. Nobody's talking about China either. What about the Uighurs? What about the genocide that's happening in China? Yet we're doing deals with China all the time. There seems to be a big push for China in this country, and yet nobody talks about the Uighurs. Why is that? So let's get, let's get through a point where we can actually push for peace. Thank you.
Okay? We'll go for one rebuttal from Ethan, and then following that from Lauren.
Yeah, I mean, you had mentioned the October 7th tragedy. As we can speak to that, people have condemned that across the board. There is widespread agreement, even among the Palestinian movement, that that was a bad thing. However, the numbers of women and children who are dying in the war in Gaza right now have outpaced it by so much. And right now, that is what is happening. And you mentioned the Uighurs in China. I think that is something that we need to talk so much more about, because we have forgotten about them. But I don't believe that the PPC and the Conservatives are really going to be the people who talk about that.
Thank you. Lauren?
So in regards to the comment that was made to be a geopolitical expert or an international expert, it doesn't take rocket science to point out what's obvious in front of us, what we see. That is wrong. That is wrong on the basic human level. I don't care how you dress it up, how you try and mix it up with other crises in the world. What we see in Gaza is wrong.
Okay? And one final rebuttal from Matt, and then we'll move on to the next.
Lauren, I think it's wrong. It's wrong when bombs are dropped on children, when bombs are dropped on an apartment housing civilians. What I meant by the comment about expertise is, I don't always know the best way to fix it. I don't always know the best approach. And there were some pretty complicated details about parks permitting that I just haven't heard before, and I'm eager to review.
Thank you. We'll go back to audience questions. We'll go for somebody at the back here. This gentleman in the yellow shirt, please.
Hi, I'm a millennial. I bought my first home here in Hessler in 2021. In 2015, the average annual income was $55,000 a year, and the average price of a home in our riding was $368,000. Right now, in 2025, the average annual income is $59,000 a year, and the average price of a home in our riding is $768,000. The basic law of supply and demand indicates that an increase in average annual income of about 8% over 10 years would not cause the prices of homes to increase by more than 100% as it has. My question to the candidates is not what are they going to do about home prices, but why do they think the price of homes in our riding has increased by more than double when the average salary is only increased by less than 10%?
Okay? Excellent. Ethan, I believe we'll give you this question first, please.
Did Ms. Bradford have an opportunity to answer the last question?
Oh. Sorry. My apologies. Yeah.
Thank you, Carol, for your question. I know we have discussed this on numerous occasions, and I do appreciate your position, and it's certainly not that I'm unsympathetic. This is a horrible, horrible situation. It just tears you apart when you see the poor helpless people in Gaza trapped while they are being air bombed, and it's got wrenchy. The problem is, there's no great solution. I think I saw today on the news in flash, and I don't get to see much, but it seemed like Hamas had offered to return all of the hostages for a permanent peace. So I don't know how Netanyahu might have responded. He probably hasn't. Canada, when the situation first broke out, we did send, I think we've $6 million in aid to the Palestinians, and we tried to extricate as many people as we could to safety. The problem is, none of the Arab countries want to let them in, because they know when they leave, they won't get to go back. Regarding sending, I am hesitant to make a public statement, because anything I say is going to upset one side or the other. And as a government, we try to be balanced. There's so much pain, and we can't solve it from here in Canada.
Thank you, Valerie. So Ethan, are you ready to switch gears to the housing question with respect to the cause of the drastic increase in housing prices? Is that correct, sir? Relative to income, yes. Okay.
Yeah, I'm ready to speak to that, because as somebody who's a Gen Z, you know, a generation after you, I am feeling that exact same pain. You know, but I think we need to go even further past 2015. We need to go all the way back to the 1980s during the government of Brian Mulroney. Because Brian Mulroney did something that I think was, to put it lightly, very dumb. He cut the Canadian Housing Affordability Task Force. We had a government agency, basically, whose job it was was to ensure that there is affordable housing for people. And he slashed the amount they were building. And then during the Liberal government of Pretagne in the 90s and early 2000s, they completely got rid of it. So immediately, first, we have problem number one. The main way we were building housing is gone. Second, a lot of the housing that we were building is either single-family homes or it's tall, high-rise apartments. There's almost nothing in between, because the laws on the ground ban things like fourplexes, and the regulations and price to build things like mid-rise apartments are insane. So you just can't do it, so you have very expensive housing.
Okay, thank you. Matt, over to you.
I, on this occasion, disagree with my young Green colleague a little bit. If you look at a graph of Canadian housing affordability over years, it kind of looks like this, and in the last five years, it did this. And that is due to some discrete policy reasons. The one is the inflation that has caused the cost of living crisis in all sorts of ways. Inflation is caused by massive reckless government spending. The Liberals doubled our debt from $600 billion to $1.2 trillion in just a matter of four or five years, which is when that graph went like this. That spending was not targeted. It was often corrupt, wasteful, fraudulent, and that is the cause of our present crisis overwhelmingly. How do we fix it? We have to build so many more homes. And right now, two-thirds of the cost of homes, one-third is the permitting, the zoning, the lawyers, the lobbying, the dealing with the city council, dealing with the Ontario Land Tribunal Board. Another third is directly taxes. So we have to decrease that. And then also, if you break our immigration system, which was the envy of the world for decades, and quintupled the number of people who are coming over, up to a million with only 200,000 new housing starts, then that also, just by supply and demand, causes a lot of problems.
Okay, thank you. Valerie with her rebuttal, and then Ethan for the rebuttal after that, please.
Okay, so I have to disagree with the government's spending comment. Getting back to the COVID, when you shut down the economy, as Randall said, people are living paycheck to paycheck, and they have to be able to live and eat. So the government actually enrolled a number of emergency financing programs for people, and they were able to give money in people's bank accounts within a matter of weeks. And we were the cash machine for Canadians and businesses, and we were happy to do that. And it's because we were able to borrow money very economically, because we were spending wisely.
Okay. Ethan, 30-second rebuttal to yourself, and then Matt will follow up with you before turning over to Randall, please.
So I do agree with the one middle part about zoning and costs and stuff like that. That is a major facet of what has caused housing to increase so much. However, there is a point about the graphs going like this and then like this. Well, graphs went like this because prices of things like good-to-build housing went up global-wide. This isn't just a Canada thing. This isn't just our immigration system. This is an entire world thing. But also, the graph, even like this, you could still see the trend. You could still see where the trend was going. And even if it got worse now, we can still recognize where it fundamentally started.
Okay? And Matt, final rebuttal.
I'm so happy to talk about the liberal record of waste, fraud, mismanagement. For one thing, we spent more on the first year of the pandemic than on all years of World War II combined. It was a crazy amount of spending. It wasn't targeted, and it didn't make sense to send 15-year-olds $2,000 a month to stay in their basement. It was nonsense. It was always advocating against the whole time. And then there are the CRA agents who were taking it while working in CRA. It was a big shambles. But additionally, there's a $300 million green-slash fund. There's a $60 million arrive scam app. There's the $8 billion for the Net Zero Accelerator Fund that may not have appreciably reduced emissions to our country at all.
30 seconds.
Okay. Can we do an hour?
Okay. Randall, we'll go over to you next, please. Thank you.
Okay, my comment on this is that, yes, government spends way more. And I just say to everyone here, if the government were to tax you enough for all these programs that they want, there would be a riot in the streets like we'd never think. So the government then prints and borrows, prints and borrows, prints and borrows. This has been going on my entire life. No government has ever cut the spending. They just don't want to. It's a way to buy votes. I don't want to buy your vote. I want to leave the money in your pocket. And sir, the reason why your homes are so more expensive is immigration and inflation. We are bringing in billions of people. We're building only 250,000 homes a year. Something's going to give. So when you look at the point that we need to take a hard look at the amount of immigration we have, that's not sustainable. We haven't built a hospital here since I lived here. Okay? So things need to change. Inflation is a big part of that. Your dollar is worth much less.
Okay? Thank you. I think we're going to move on to the next question, if everybody doesn't mind.
Oh, sorry. Yeah. Sorry, I'm terrible at keeping track here. I'm just watching.
Was that a question or was that a rebuttal?
Yeah, sorry. Okay? So Valerie?
Yes, getting to the housing, I do want to deal with the government's spending. There's not a time that I don't go by and talk to businesses, and they are still thanking us for keeping us afloat during the COVID. So many businesses would have failed if we didn't have that. So I don't consider it reckless spending. So now turning to the question at hand, why are our housing prices so high? And I know that you were talking about here, too. There's a couple of reasons. During COVID, people that were in the GTA, in overpriced towns, or tiny little condos where they couldn't get out, and it took them hours to get up and down the elevators, they moved out here. They discovered paradise. They could come out here and buy a nice big house with a nice big yard and have no mortgage and discovered the great lifestyle that we have. So it's because we have a desirable community. I agree completely. Wages have not kept up. Civil servants that work for the province of Ontario had their wages frozen, and then 1% per year. And when inflation was running at 4% or 5%, you know, they're falling farther and farther behind all the time. So that affects affordability.
Excellent. Thank you. Next question. We've had a gentleman waiting very patiently up here in the second row.
I just want to know from Ms. Valerie, what is your stance on carbon tax? And how does your party plan to address that?
Thank you for your question. So the carbon tax, the consumer carbon tax has been removed. When Prime Minister Carney came into office, that's the first thing you did the first day. He signed, it's kind of looked like something else, a signature, but anyway, signed to get rid of the consumer carbon tax. It had become unpalatable despite the fact that rebates were happening. You're all going to get your one last rebate in April to compensate for the carbon tax you paid in the first quarter of the year. The industrial carbon tax needs to stay in place. Industries know it needs to stay in place. They're the polluters. They need to bear the cost. And those taxes are used to help with carbon capture and alternative, like to reduce the carbon emissions. We have a carbon emission problem, and we have to deal with it. We all see the effects of climate change. It's horrific, and we can't turn our backs on it. So, but it's off the consumer now. It'll be completely on the industrial polluters.
Thank you. Just a quick reminder to those answering questions, the questions are for all candidates. So just to, just to help my personal sanity in terms of keeping track of who's speaking and not missing turns, yeah, no, it's okay. So Matt, I know you have a rebuttal, and then we would like you to answer the question. So 30-second rebuttal for Valerie, and then you get your minute.
Oh, I found the bonus time hack. That's true. So Ms. Bradford, with respect, I think the questioner was asking about your personal position on it. While we understand that Mark Carney has not repealed the law, but has set the level down to zero, many of us are suspicious that he's going to turn it back up again, since he spent the better part of the last five years advocating for higher carbon taxes. In fact, he wrote a book advocating for higher carbon taxes. So if, do you support carbon taxes being zero? And if you do, then why did you vote for the carbon tax 24 times?
I...
Excuse me? No clapping. Thank you.
Okay. So I support the carbon tax being removed. I think it was effective at the time, but it had become so much consumer resistance that it was time for it to go. And it's gone, and it's not coming back. I know Conservatives like to insinuate that it is coming back, but it's not. And I really am enjoying that my gas tank has shrunk by about $15 a fill-up, and I think that's just wonderful. So that feels immediate. So people, when they were getting a rebate four months later based on, you know, their consumption, they didn't equate to that. So this way, everybody feels it right away. You can see that it's gone down. It also helps that oil prices have gone down. So yes, I'm in favor. Of it being gone.
Yeah.
Permanently.
So Matt, now what we'll do is you get your minute to answer the question.
Let me ask. Thank you. So I was terribly confused by that response, honestly, legitimately. Like, if you were for it when you were for it, but now you're against it because it's unpopular. I don't, I think that policy should be made based on data, based on principles. It shouldn't be that you make a policy and you think it's going to be popular, and you take it away, and you think it's going to be unpopular, and then celebrate that now it's cheaper to buy gas. That was very confusing, I'm sorry to say. Obviously, certain parties not support carbon taxes. We want to get rid of them, vis a vis the industrial carbon tax. Our heavy industry is under extreme stress from Donald Trump bullying us and adding industrial carbon tax at this time would be insult upon injury. The other thing I want to say is, if you hammer our heavy industry with carbon taxes, it's going to go across the border to the United States, and it's still going to produce carbon. Our economy won't be benefiting from it. We won't have the energy independence we need to stand up to Trump. This is shooting ourselves in the foot at a time of national crisis. Even worse, if that heavy industry goes over to China, where it pollutes twice as much and supports a genocidal dictatorship.
Thank you. Well timed. Randall, over to yourself, please.
You know, I laugh at all this stuff, because there's no such thing as climate change, because climate change has always happened. It's been happening my entire life. In fact, this fear to keep pushing on sometimes, acid rain, styrofoam boxes, ozone layer, all these things, my entire life, but I'm still here. I should be dead, according to them. And Valerie, you said that you want to lower our emissions. Okay. Why are you shipping, why is your government shipping millions of barrels of oil to China? Number one polluter on the planet. This needs to stop, okay? Not just to shipping our oil, but why China? Why China? And this has been happening for a good year. I believe it was June or, yeah, I think it was on June of last year. At least that's what the reports say. My point is, stop living in fear. I don't live in fear.
Thank you, Randall. Valerie with a rebuttal.
Since you directed it to me, I think some things aren't worth a rebuttal, because they're just so bizarre. I'll leave it at that.
Lauren, you get one minute to address the question.
Sorry, what was the question again? One of the issues that I see with implementing the carbon tax, okay? We can agree and disagree whether it's affecting people directly. My party position is to tax the polluters, right? So we're talking about heavy industry, the industries that actually create it. The worry, the concern that I have is that if we continue to impose that tax on industry, that they will somehow pass that cost down to consumers. So we need a mechanism and a legislation in place so that those industries cannot just pass that price back down to the consumer.
Thank you. And then Ethan to finish up on this question, please.
You know, I have, I'm a very honest person, and I have valued my campaign on honesty. So I would be completely honest and lose 90% of the votes here and say I support a carbon tax, because I'm a student of history, which Randy seems to not be, despite how often he brings it up, because he brought up acid rain. You know how we doubled acid rain? We taxed the thing that was causing it, and it went away, because they stopped using it. You know what we did with the ozone layer? You know the ozone layer, they have a hole. It no longer has that hole, because we had aerosols that we were sending out. You know how we got rid of those aerosols? We taxed them. This is how we got rid of them. The reason why these aren't a problem is because we saw a solution, and we did it. Now, I think that the consumer carbon tax was rolled out horribly. There is no debate from me on that. I think that it had terrible optics.[1784.60] I think that it had terrible optics, I think it was rolled out improperly, but I think that it's something that we need to handle, one of the greatest emergencies of my lifetime.
Okay, thank you, Ethan. Randall, you have a rebuttal?
Yes, I have a rebuttal. You may have studied history, but I've lived it. And I have to say, what the government does is they tax you. Sure, they can say they're going to tax industry, but they pass those costs on to you. So how much more are you willing to pay when you've paid $4 almost for a one-liter thing of milk? Okay? This is the outcome of taxation. Sure, we can tax, 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 and then you have nothing. Canada doesn't pollute nearly as much as they want to say, okay? The bigger polluters like China need to be dealt with. We're not doing.
Thank you. Okay, next question, the woman in the corner there with the hijab. Thank you.
Thank you. This is for everybody, but Dr. Matt, it might be more specific to you, but again, it's open for everybody. The Conservative leader has called all pro-council protesters or protesters hate marches and has vowed to deport any legal visa holders or students if they attended any of these marches. That sounds very much like Trump and his attack on civil liberties. Peaceful protest is a fundamental human right. Mr. Polian has also vowed to invoke the notwithstanding clause to overthrow the courts and this is deeply concerning when it comes to those who value the Canadian Charter of Human Rights. With all that's happening in the USA, there's palpable fear of losing our fundamental rights. How would you, all of you, ensure that Canadian Charter of Human Rights is protected and, you know, despite all the leaders' assumptions? Thank you.
Excellent. Randall, we'll have you answer this question first. Unfortunately, Matt will get to answer it last. Okay? Go ahead, Randall.
Okay, so first of all, I believe in peaceful protesting, okay? And that is protected by our Charter of Rights and Freedoms. Unpeaceful, advocating for the death of any identifiable race is a crime in this country. So river to the sea, Palestine will be free, is a direct attack on the Jewish community. I know you can give me the look, but it's still the truth. You cannot advocate for the death of identifiable race in this country. I am an advocate for peace. That's what I want. I want peace everywhere. Unfortunately, that's not the reality in most cases. So yes, I want peace and that's going to leave it at that for now.
Thank you, Randall. Valerie, to you, please.
Yes, so there's two parts of this. I definitely share your concern about the use of the notwithstanding clause. When that was brought in, it was to be in only extremely exceptional circumstances and it has only been used by provinces up till now, never by the federal government. I think it's a thin edge in the way when you have somebody who's a candidate to be Prime Minister threatening to use it. If you use it one time, it opens the door. We are so fortunate to have a Charter of Rights and Freedoms, they don't in the States. And then you get somebody like President Trump, look at all the rights he's taken away. Look at the people he's rounding up and shipping out to horrible prisons elsewhere. I do agree that peaceful protest needs to be respected, it's a definite value, but it needs to be peaceful when protests prevent other people from accessing facilities, attending classes and going about their daily lives. Then those people's rights are infringing on other people's rights and that's where it becomes a problem.
Okay, thank you, Valerie. Matt, rebuttal?
Yeah, I'd like to rebut that. I'm a Charter of Rights and Freedoms absolutist. When Ms. Bradford, you voted for the imposition of emergency measures act, that violated Charter rights, it violated section two of the freedom for speech, it violated section eight against unreasonable search and seizure. It is not me saying that, it's the Federal Court of Canada, Justice Mosley wrote that in his decision. Why did you vote to violate those Charter rights? And would you like to take the opportunity to apologize now?
Well, as a person who endured life in Ottawa during there, I can tell you that there were many people that were really not honoring the residents and people's rights there. It was pretty terrible and because the provincial government wasn't sending in the OPP, we had to declare an emergency in order to clear out. That had gone on for weeks, people couldn't sleep. It was a terrible, terrible situation. And I think it's easy for people that weren't in Ottawa to say, oh, this was terrible. But I can tell you, our rights, those of us that were down there were infringed upon by those people that were looking for freedoms that I still don't understand.
Excuse me, sir? Unless a member of the audience has been selected for a question, no comments, please. Okay? We're almost through the evening, everybody. Let's keep the tempers down, let's keep the, you know, let's keep this debate going within the laid-out decorum, please. Thank you. Randall, yourself?
I do have a rebuttal to that because I was there. I saw firsthand the peace that was there. Yes, there was honking of the horns, oh my God, we can't have that. So we got rid of that. They asked to move some of the trucks out of downtown Ottawa. We did that. So most of the trucks were right there on Wellington Street. They were talking about, they were blocking emergency services. That was not the case. In fact, they assisted, they actually went out there and shoveled the damn snow. So all I've seen and what you saw on the media are two different things. Sorry.
Thank you, Randall. Okay. Who's next for the question here?
Lauren.
Lauren, okay.
So to directly answer your question, so I have participated in many rallies, many protests, many demonstrations, but the one that really struck me was in 2010 when I was at the G20 demonstration in Toronto. And our rights and freedoms were suspended by Prime Minister Harbour, the Conservative government, and Premier McGinty, the Liberal Premier of Ontario. I couldn't believe it. We had families, children in strollers, and we've got military helicopters above us. When we walked by the US Embassy, they had riot police in front and you could see sharpshooters above them. And I turned my friend and I said, this is Canada? Really? This is what it's come to? So I wholeheartedly believe in somebody's right to protest and have a political opinion and speak about it, that's what I think we're all about.
Thank you. Ethan?
I mean, yeah, as I mentioned, I originally had a Palestinian-Canadian friendship pin on my blazer. I will always stand with the Palestinian community against the genocide in Gaza and apartheid in the West Bank. I will always preserve the right. I did sign up to endorse the Vote Palestinian platform. You had a question there, thank you, Lauren. I will always stand with that. I will also fight against the idea that to the river, to the sea is a call for genocide as I believe it's only a call for genocide if you believe that giving Palestinians freedoms all across the lands of Israel and Palestine is to do the same to Israel, what Israel has done to Palestine.
I've answered it.
Oh, sorry.
I made a question for you.
Sorry. I can help you, Valerie, no problem.
I appreciate the candidate's support here.
Go ahead. Thank you, Ms. for the question. I've received questions similar to it at the door, so I actually have a little bit of experience answering. I'll double down on what I just said. I am a Charter of Rights and Freedoms absolutist, I'm a human rights absolutist, I'm a free speech absolutist. I don't know about the comments that you quoted, I don't know what the context was or if they were referring to criminal acts, that is something different, but in terms of freedom of speech, actually not. Over my dead body, would you or anyone you know be deported for exercising free speech rights in Canada? Regarding the notwithstanding clause, the notwithstanding clause is part of the Charter. Mr. Polian made those comments regarding mass murderers being kept in prison. And I just, I don't think, the notwithstanding clause is the constitutional way to say, I disagree with the judge's ruling. Violating the Charter and a judge tells you it's a violation and then just saying, well, I did it anyways, as the Liberal government has done, prompted by Mark Carney, by the way, he was texting Marco Manicino asking him to do that. That is completely unconstitutional and a complete violation of our rights.
Thank you. Next, this is our last question. We have the gentleman in the very back right corner there. Thank you.
So I hear that Valerie mentioned the government has to be balanced. So is balanced government, is the right government to stand for Trump tariffs? And if not, why would the government choose to be balanced in one matter and not be balanced in the other, like Palestine? So is balanced government, is the right government? And if not, why the double standard in standing for Trump against supporting the army embargo against the genocide of Israel towards Gaza?
Yeah, so Valerie, it's your turn now in terms of your order.
Okay, thank you. I'm not sure I completely understood the question, but I would say that if you look at our caucus, it's very representative of the population of Canada. And we have to be cognizant that there are many different views in Canada and we need to respect everybody's views. And my job as a local MP is not to take a public position regardless of what my personal feelings are, that is going to be inflammatory and increase divisiveness here. It's unfortunate that I think the Middle East situation as it currently stands is the first one that I can remember where the conflict actually came aboard our shores. We've had many world conflicts over the years and we could be sympathetic, I mean, we can't resolve them from here, but the hatred and the divisiveness never came on our shores. But the Islamophobia and the antisemitism that is being perpetrated by people's feelings about the Middle East is really tragic.
Sorry, thank you. Lauren, over to you next, please.
So I agree with the balanced approach when it comes to respecting everybody's views, but also we're in a very unique position when it comes to world history when we look at what's going on geopolitically. So our American friends are actually stepping back from the world stage. Canada actually has an opportunity, you know, somebody once said, you don't never look at a crisis the other way. Canada has an opportunity to step up with other liberal democracies and establish leadership in the world. So like I said, this is a very tense moment in the world with crises here, there and everywhere, and we see that different countries are aligning differently because with the Americans stepping back from their world role, when it comes to security and trade and everything that goes with it, this is going to be a very important time to find out is Canada a leader in the world with our liberal democracies that we share the values with?
Randall, I see you have a rebuttal there, but we are past our 8:30 time to go to closing remarks. So what we'd like to do is just let the rest of the candidates give their one-minute answer to this question and then we'll go over to closing remarks. My apologies, everybody. Go ahead, Ethan.
Yes, so I mean, I think that while the government should be respecting everybody's views, and I think that is incredibly important, that's baked in part of our Charter of Rights and Freedoms, like Strauss here has been talking about all night. But I don't necessarily agree with this idea that the government has to try and find a balance between every single issue like you mentioned. We shouldn't be trying to find a balance between Trump's tariffs because what's the balance between letting our economy die and just accepting that? And it's the same thing with Israel-Palestine. Our focus should be on finding the right solution, finding a solution of justice. And I think that finding the right solution, the solution that is most just, that is best, is better than trying to balance whatever nebulous idea of balance that we have.
Thank you. Matt?
Sir, you've asked a kind of deeply philosophical question, but platonic moderation. And I think platonic moderation is advisable or desirable in certain situations and not in others. I think partly your question, as it applies in Canadian society, is answered by the idea of having a Canada-first campaign, where we put Canadians first, our economy first, against the predations of the United States president. We don't balance Donald Trump's interests with Canadians' interests as a government here or for Canada's interests. And likewise, I'm for every Canadian's human rights and every Canadian's rights and freedoms, like this lady here to have free speech. I want everyone in Canada to have free speech. I don't want balance on that point. Likewise, I know that, I've talked to lots of community leaders, I know that the mosque in Cambridge was vandalized, I know that the synagogue in Kitchener was vandalized, I know that the Hindu temples have been vandalized. I don't want any temples, mosques, places of worship vandalized. So I don't want your freedom of religion violated, I want it 0% violated and I want things to be 0% violated, no balance.
Thank you, Matt. Randall, for you to close, please.
I also agree that you, if you want balance, you've got to treat everybody fairly. And believe it or not, there's a lot of Americans who believe that they were taken advantage of by all our NATO allies, including Canada. We all signed them, well, not us, but the government signed on to the NATO pact that was 2% of our GDP. They have not fulfilled that and that left the United States paying the lion's share of these funds, especially in Europe. This is why he's sort of pulling back because he wants Europe to start paying their fair share, the guys like to say. What's wrong with that?
Mine, as there is a wealth of information easily available. It's been such an honor to be your MP and I humbly ask for your support to continue that work under the leadership of our government.
Thank you, Valerie. Candidates, I know, candidates. So we have rebuttals on these representatives. Matt? We have, we have a format for rebuttals, please respect that, okay? We've done a great job. Yes, 30 seconds, please. Matt, and then we'll go to Lauren.
I'm so disappointed, Ms. Bradford. I've run a positive campaign, I've talked about concrete policy proposals. I have not gone to doors and mentioned your name, I have not had my supporters post lies about you on social media. The things that you said are verifiably untrue. I have received $0 from Elon Musk. I mean, folks who are interested in that sort of thing to know that Mark Carney gave Elon Musk $250 million through Brookfield Asset Management to buy Twitter. In 2022, I have accepted $0 from Elon Musk. And I, I don't know why you would say that, that personally. And when I was met with loss of health of Paul Norfair, we had a 30% lower COVID mortality rate because I followed the science, because I followed the data.
Sorry, Matt. 30 seconds. Ladies and gentlemen, please, we're almost through the night. We have the decorum in place for a reason. Ms. Bradford, if you don't mind, what we'd like to do is just go through the closing results, we weren't supposed to have rebuttals for this. We just want to just progress with the evening because we have to keep in mind that the Legion here are volunteering their time and we do have a time that we have to make. Thank you. Lauren, please go ahead.
So, back to my line here. So unfortunately, that kind of thing is why people are turned up and halted. So I started off the conversation saying I was applying for a job and I'd like to thank everybody here for inviting me for an interview for that job. So I have a proven track record, I think I have the skill set. And I also want to emphasize the fact that it's not just someone popping up at election time, but that work I have done, I have stood up for this community for decades through all the different work I do and different elected positions I've held. And that work will go on because I care deeply about this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Lauren. Okay, Ethan?
Yeah, so thank you for the great night. You know, it's been great to get out and have this opportunity to have a little debate, I guess, among our constituents. I am the youngest person on this stage, I hope that that does not detract you from considering asking your vote for me. When you vote for agreeing, you are voting for an independent voice. As much as Matt Schruss and Valerie Bradford have been talking about their personal views, at the end of the day, whether it's the Liberals, the Conservatives or A and E, they whip their votes. And if there is a vote that comes across their desks that they disagree with, well, if they're whipped, they might not have a choice. And if they want to keep their job, then they have to vote with the whip. However, I will never be whipped. The Green Party does not whip their votes. We are independent. I can disagree with party leadership on any issue and we remain in good standing because first and foremost, I am running to be your representative. Not Elizabeth May, not the President of the Green Party, but the people of Kitchener, South Hessler.
Thank you, Ethan. Matt, over to you, please.
Thank you, neighbors, so much for being here. As I say, this is my hometown, this is where I'm raising my family, this is the community I've served as a physician for the last 13 years. I've treated thousands of patients, I've saved hundreds of lives, I've followed the science and the data and proper medical ethics in all of my professional activities. It would be the honor of my life to serve you as your Member of Parliament. I, in approaching my criticism of the Liberal government, I always try to go with facts and with the record as it stands. I've never made a personal attack against my opponents, I have talked about the votes that they've rendered in the House of Commons and I will continue to do that whether I'm your Member of Parliament or not. So thank you again for being here, thank you again to the Legion, thank you to the citizens of Cambridge for organizing. We need, we need a big change, we need hope and we need less of what that was. We need hope, and we need less of what that was.
Randall? For our final, for our final one. Thank you, Randall.
Thank you, everybody, for having me tonight. It's been an honor, especially in this place. It's been really nice.